Okay, good evening everyone and I'd like to welcome you to this regular business meeting for the Stevensville City Council and I will call us to order at this time. And want to send out our thoughts to Mr. Nix this evening. I know he's still recovering from his injuries but doing well. And so Alan, if you're out there watching, we're thinking about you buddy and you're in our prayers, so hang in there. It's good to see you're on a track toward recovery. And we will begin with Citizens General Discussion this evening. If anybody's got any topic that they'd like to come before the council and talk about, be free to do so at this time. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to introduction to a new team member tonight. And Pat, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you Mayor. Mayor and council, you've already had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Jeremy Allen. Jeremy, would you mind coming up to the podium? I want to introduce our new Community Services Director to members of the community, Mr. Jeremy Allen. He is originally from Madera, California. He's a graduate of Chauchoa Union High School in Chauchoa, California. He holds Associate Degree from Merced Community College, a Bachelor of Science Degree from California State University, and an MBA from the University of Phoenix. Mr. Allen's background is in Parks and Recreation. He's served in the cities of Taft, California, and Cedar Hill, Texas. He is currently the Operations Manager for the City of Cleveland Convention and Visitors' Bureau. Nine years of experience in Recreation, Community Services, Facility Operations, different programs for senior citizens. The one advantage he had that none of our other applicants had is he is a licensed pilot. He is familiar with our FAA Rules and Regulations Airport Operations and as Community Services Director, the airport is one of his areas of responsibility. So, we feel like we've done very well with that. Jeremy's a member of several different professional organizations. He and his family currently reside in Cedar Hill, but they are in the process of relocating to Stevensville just as quickly as they can. He will start with us on Monday and let's welcome Mr. Jeremy Allen.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, I just appreciate the opportunity and I look forward to getting started, so thanks for having me.
Okay, well looking, we're not going to let you off the hook that easy.
Wasn't ready for no speech.
Nice try. So, has anyone on the council got anything you want to ask or say? Okay, if I know anything about Chauchoa, there's some pretty good football that's played out in that part of California.
That's right.
So, you know a little bit about high school football, which will help you here in Stevensville. But it's also impressive, your background and I know through the interview process, the committee that did the interview was very impressed with you and we're excited to have you onboard and it's a very exciting job and we're excited to have you. So, Jeremy, welcome.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Just steal some of that business from Cleveland this direction.
Yeah. That's right. All right, the next item on the agenda is some administrative action with E wrath County with our Municipal Court. And Pat, if you'll just walk us through that, please sir.
Mayor and council, as you're aware, the City of Stevensville contracts with E wrath County Justice of the Peace Precinct One Court to serve as our Municipal Court as well. The agreement between the city and the county is that the city pays 50% of the JP Court's budget is our contribution, I guess you'd say, for them operating our Municipal Court and handling all the municipal violations and what have you. It's time to renew that contract. It's really the same contract that we have signed in the past. There's a slight increase in our cost, but it still represents 50% of the JP Court budget and it's not out of line with what has been in the past. So, I would recommend that council approve this contract.
Okay, any questions for Pat? Not all entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we accept and approve the agreement between the Municipal Court between E wrath County and the City of Stevensville, shown on page one and two in our agenda packet.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mrs. Akri, to approve the agreement for Municipal Court between E wrath County and the City of Stevensville as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries as presented. All right, now we'll move on to item five on the agenda, which is a discussion regarding the trade codes that the City of Stevensville operates under. And at this time, I'll open a public hearing for discussion and action regarding the adoption of trade codes, including the 2000, the International Building Code, Mechanical Code, Plumbing Code, Electrical Code, Fuel Gas Code, Residential Code, and Energy Conservation Code. And ask Judy to give us a brief on that, please.
Thank you Mayor and Council. It's always good to see the trades codes come for update and renewal, helps you on your ISO rating and so many other areas. The boards, the advisory boards do really, really well at reviewing these codes every so often and I think this has shown them that they need to do it more often and get together more often. So, I would tell you that they do a great, great job. And a couple of the boards' members are here tonight. We'll be looking at these different codes, they're called the trades codes, building, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, gas, residential code, and the energy code. Like I say, the passage of these codes really brings you up to date and they will be looking at, a couple of these boards will be looking at the code, especially the 2015, that is out now and they'll be getting on top of that as quickly as possible and reviewing that for the coming year or two. The 2009 International Building Code, the International Energy Conservation Code, and the International Residential Code are the ones that are first on the agenda tonight, the trades codes. You're currently under the 2006 International Code. The members have been in the process of looking at the 2009 and the 12 and related documents and of course, staff has been helping them greatly on that. One of the costly mandates interjected into Chapter 11 of the 2012, when they looked at it, the International Code, just didn't sit well with them and so that's kind of why they went back to the 2009. And all these codes are being suggested or recommended to you without any local amendments or any of the North Texas Council Government's mandates or code recommendations. The City of Stevensville has been operating under this Option B, which is a mandate for fire sprinklers in any new structure or substantial addition totaling 6,000 square feet or more. The builders and the realtors preferred the Option A, so they've really not taken either one of those and they're saying, at this point in town, just adopt the code as is, the 2009. Like I said, the 2015 is already out, we're trying to get copies of it so that the Board, the Building Board can go ahead and start looking at that very closely. The next one is the 2009 International Plumbing Code, the 2009 Fuel Code, Gas Code. You're currently under the 2006 on both of those. The Plumbing Advisory Board has reviewed the 2012 and the 2009, so they are going or recommending to you the 2009 International Plumbing Code and International Fuel Gas Code. Then the 2012 International Mechanical Code, currently under the 2006. The boards reviewed the 12 and is recommending, has no opposition to anything in that 2012 code and that's what they're recommending to you for adoption and upgrading. The 2011 National Electric Code, you're currently under the 2005. And all these codes come out at varying times, they're not all adopted or all come out at the same year. They're kind of, they're staggered a little bit. But you're under the 2005 Electrical Code, the Board has reviewed the 2011 and that's what they're recommending to you. Now, on your ordinance, it's in your packet, we have sent out the revision on that so that it is truly up to date on each one of these as far as the year is concerned. And I would recommend and ask you that at the very end of that ordinance, where it says that it will become full force and effect on December 2nd, I would ask you that you postpone that until January 31st of 2015, in case some projects are in motion or in the planning process and give people a little time to realize these codes are going to be in effect by January 31st of 2015. So, I would just ask that you do that. Any questions?
Okay, so Judy, if I follow what you just said there at the end, on Section 150.09 effective date, there's the wording here that says, "This ordinance shall be in force and effect from and after January 31st." This should say 2015.
Correct.
Right, so if we approve this tonight, it will take effect essentially the 1st of February 2015.
Correct.
Okay.
It just gives any builders or people, potential builders, to know, get the publicity out to know that the new codes are going to be in effect. In case they're planning or have a project in process, they will know. Need to go ahead and get it permitted or wait. I don't know if there's any real dramatic changes to the codes that would affect it, but I just think it's just a courtesy not to have those go into effect immediately.
Okay. All right, is, any questions for Judy?
Did you, you have a board that gave you feedback, did you get feedback from the construction community at large, developers at large?
You know, this all kind of took place before I got here, but, and different staff members were involved with each of these boards. I understand that they did get considerable input from the builders, the realtors, other people, yes. But I wanted to go ahead and have a public hearing tonight, get the publicity out there that we would be holding a public hearing on these new codes so that anybody that might want to come and say anything about the codes could do that in a public hearing atmosphere.
My experience has been with codes, that typically codes are just a bunch of professionals that an organization keeps themselves in existence by charging dues and selling books and so on. They really doesn't have a lot to do with improving anything, particularly the Energy Code. I've heard nothing, I've read several, in the last few days, several articles about these new codes and everybody says, I've not seen anybody that's not in the trade organizations even suggest going to 2012 code on anything. They say it's all a bunch of junk. You know, as a matter of fact, what one of them says is it's going backwards in time.
Well, and that's why we have heard that the 2015, I think there's been a lot of, oh, negative things, just like what you're talking about in general in the last couple of years on these codes. Therefore, and I've heard this pervasively, that the 2015 is going to be much better. Now, do I know that for sure? I don't think anybody knows that until they get the code in their hand and review it. But that's just what I've heard because the backlash of these others' codes have been so bad. So, I can only hope for improvement.
So, with your recommendation it coming, becoming effective February 1st, then anybody who has a plan submitted prior to that date would be under the old code?
Yes.
So, there'd be no requirements for updates or changes, they're not going to come back later and hear, "Oh, wait a minute, the code changed, you haven't finished your construction."
Heavens no, heavens no. Anything that's in process that has been permitted, have been permitted.
In other words, if I have, if I'm a builder and I have a construction project and I've submitted the project, had it reviewed by an architect and engineer, et cetera, turning in all the plans and it's not been permitted yet and then February 1st it changes, now I got to go back and redo all that?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you have, like you said, have submitted them.
I thought you said permitted.
Well, I did, but if something's in submission now, of course we'll review it under the old code.
Okay.
Of course we will, until the new code goes into effect. It will be reviewed under the old code.
There you go, that's my answer, thank you.
Any other questions for Judy? Okay, is there anyone that would like to come and speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody like to come and speak in opposition? Any comments from any of the Trade Board Chair that are here tonight? And I really appreciate y'all coming out. And also want to echo Judy's comment about thanking you for the work you've done to look at this because I know there's been a lot of discussion about what's the right thing to do. And I know at one time, we were considering jumping to the 2012 and it appears that in the measure twice, cut once philosophy of life, let's look at this and maybe start in an iterative approach with 2009 in anticipation that the 2012 is going to change. And so, I mean, it appears that that's, that's one of the reasons why we see a lot of 2009 tonight is because of that very fact. Is that pretty accurate? Now, I do see 2012 as an exception to that. How is it different that allows 2012 to go ahead and be adopted versus the other? Does anybody know or can speak to the difference there? Or is it?
I'm Tom Heath, City's Building Inspector. For those of you who may not know, I lay low sometimes. I've been on code hearings in other states and in Washington DC and have lobbied, paid by builders and by the government. The 2012 code had tremendous pressure from the Department of Energy to cut costs, eliminate fuel costs, and in the process probably added to a medium-sized residential house about $8,000. That expanse forces people to go to pre-existing buildings, trailer houses, to lower their standards, is not really to an advantage. Generally, the rural communities in America have fought that fiercely and the builders' organizations have been the front of the fight. States like Maryland.
So, Tom, my specific question is, the 2012 Mechanical Code is being recommended tonight for adoption and it is the only code that ventures into the 2012 arena?
Correct.
Is there something different about the lack of changes in the Mechanical Code that make it different than the others?
There was one item in the Mechanical Code that was a little bit scary, but it is clipped by the larger book, the IBC.
Okay.
Okay, and that was air economizers. That was brought up by the Mangrams.
So, the Building Code, the 09 Building Code will be the...
The 09 Building Code is the central document.
Okay.
It's the constitution, the bible that holds the others together. The others can twig out, but sometimes when they venture out over here, industry has not caught up with those economizers yet.
So, if we do the 09, we won't force ourselves to go to that?
Economizer, and that's an energy issue. The committees on the I codes nationally, where you'll have each state will have a representative. We've contacted those representatives and asked if we can exclude a section, so the part that we brought up to the, to the trades boards, do we take the 2012 code and in the IRC clip Chapter 11 and insert the 06 or the 09 Energy Code, Chapter 11, to let industry catch up and not force the issue on these mandates for excessive energy requirements? That is a legal operation that we can take place. I've been looking at the 2015 code, which is about half as damaging as the 12, but there are still some things that we have to learn about it before we would jump through that hoop. The 09 generally is an innocuous document. I was at the hearings for 10 days straight in Minnesota on the 1,200 votes that we had on the entire I code family. The largest debate in those hearings was the fire sprinkler mandate. When the building inspectors who opposed the fire sprinkler mandate because they thought industry was not there to force it upon residential, when we lost that vote there with about 600 of us in attendance, they, the home builders associated and realtors went to the state legislatures and clipped that in every state in the United States. The 09 code, other than that, was redefinitions of braced wall panels, clarification on documents. Actually, there is, there are as many freedoms given in the 09 codes as limiting items that are added. And it basically is a very mild step forward that actually clarifies better than damages. The 12 was very damaging to the economy.
So, bottom line, everybody is met, physically met and gone over this stuff and the trade boards are all recommending that these are the ones that get adopted and we haven't had any opposition to that?
Yes, sir.
As far as electrical, which me and Rod are on that, Rod just got on that, I think we met four times as our deal and went over pretty extensively in the various pieces and the changes of it.
Okay.
And that's what, as far as electrical, I don't know about the rest of it.
Okay. Well, good, and that's, that's very encouraging to hear and from what I did hear is that that was pretty representative of what each of the boards did to meet. You did meet several times, got together, talked about this stuff, went back and forth with it and so it was a, there's a lot of great participation in that and so that's a good, that's good. Any other questions on this?
We have two general contractors in their audience, I know, what do y'all think about it?
One thing I like, when this first started, the city was recommending that we all go to 2012. And by being where we split this up and let the different trades go a different way, I think it was great. I think it's going to let a lot of the projects that might get shut down go forward now because they don't have to go by more stringent codes. So, I really like it, I think most of the builders do.
Okay. All right.
One of the, just for, I don't know if any of y'all know that or not, IBC is updated every three years and we went from the 5 to the 11. And that's kind of, I don't know what the other ones are, how often they are updated.
Typically three years. Typically three years. Okay, there is, I guess there is one question that I wanted to, to ask that we look at in more detail in subsequent meetings and I was going to ask probably the Public Safety Committee to look at this with the appropriate Trade Board and the Fire Chief, and that is this issue about the Option A or Option B for the 6,000 square feet for sprinkler So that we can make a decision that best fits the environment that Stevensville exists in. And I realized from the notes here from the staff that that's an area where there was a lot of discussion. And I think it's interesting that Option A is still less restrictive than Option B and I think that that's an issue that probably was left on with no recommendation because it requires coordination outside of the Trade Board itself. And so, what I would like us to do is have the Public Safety Committee take this as an action for the applicable Trade Board and the Fire Chief to get together and talk about Option A and Option B as it relates to Stevensville, Texas. And come back at some future date with the recommendation on that. Is that agreeable?
That sounds good to me, Mayor.
Okay. Chief, you okay with that? Pat, you sound good, okay. Is that okay with the Trade Board for us to look at that? Okay.
You were saying prefer the IBC 2009 old safety or just that portion?
Well, what I'd like is, you know, we can go ahead and adopt the code tonight and we can amend it at any time, but I, I think that we, we could do one or the other. What I was recommending is that we just look at, take a specific look at that to consider possibly amending it in the future. And if we could look at it before this takes effect and on one, you know, maybe our goal should be to try to look at this and have it before the council meeting in February so we can take action essentially the same week that we would be having this take effect. So, does that sound like a 60 days fair for that? Okay, all right, great. Well, then I'll, I'll close the public hearing on this at that time, at this time and then consider a motion from the floor.
I move we adopt ordinance 2014, what's the number?
29.
24, 2014.
29, is that correct?
29.
29. Second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Savin, seconded by Mr. McDaniel to adopt ordinance 2014-29, which is adopting codes as outlined in the agenda, that being the 2009 Building Code, 2012 Mechanical Code, 2009 Plumbing Code, 2011 Electrical Code, 2009 Fuel Gas Code, 2009 Residential Code, and 2009 Energy Conservation Code. Any discussion? Okay, if not, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries. Approving ordinance 2014-29. And, you know, once again, I'd really like to thank the trade boards for all your work in this area. I think it's, it's been also reflective of the creation of the Builders Association as well and the communication that exists and is growing with the city and the teamwork that's taking place there. Just want to thank y'all for that very much. All right, now we'll proceed to the Planning and Zoning Section of the agenda, item six. And I'll open a public hearing for discussion and action regarding a request to rezone from B1 Neighborhood to B2 Retail Commercial for 2550 West Lingaville Road. All right, Judy?
Thank you Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on Wednesday, the 19th and recommended denial of this request. Florentino Mendez is the owner requesting this rezoning from B1 to B2. The property is currently vacant, referring to your first map, which is not up there. I want to want the circle. There you go. That is the location map. This is, this shows the existing zoning, R1s you can see, and then the 200-foot circle. I wanted to tell y'all that I'm taking a lot of pains to send these letters out to the property owners on any of these cases and explaining exactly what they're getting in the mail. Before, it was just simply the, I think, what they put in the newspaper. I think anytime you get a chance to educate the citizenry about zoning, land use, et cetera, you should take it. And so, my letters are quite lengthy and show the circle and what the... And so my letters are quite lengthy and show the, the circle and what the circle is about. And clients should be interested. I also send out, um, the list of uses for the existing land uses and the proposed land uses. I've presented those in your packet as well. This one, you can see is, the center is there in the circle, this is a two hundred foot circle that is required by state law for the notification of the property, uh, owners in the area. The R one is back to the west, uh, but it certainly is affected by this, uh, rezoning, definitely. There were, uh, let's see, we had, um, the applicant was sent the letter. He didn't show up at the P and Z meeting. I asked, when I send the applicant letter, I say, you need to be at both the P and Z meeting and the council meeting to present your case. Uh, Mr. Mendez was not, uh, there at the P and Z meeting, and I don't think he's here tonight as well. We also publish it in the newspaper. He stated in his application, uh, for the rezoning that the reason for his request was to allow him to use the property for a contractor yard and storage and masonry material. As you can see from the list that have been included in your agenda packet, uh, that use is not allowed in the current zoning district. But in the proposed B two district, there are two or three land uses that could fit into that contractor yard designation. I find it interesting that, uh, Higginbothams and the contractor yard just to the north and the single-family residential units to the far west, that many storage units that are just right there in the two hundred foot circle, Higginbothams and the other contractor yard are actually non-conforming uses within that zoning district as well. So that's just something I wanna point it out to you. I tried to give you a little bit of, um, zoning one-on-one, uh, on these, uh, staff recommendations and what you need to be looking for, or questions that me ask for any rezoning case. Have there been any changes in conditions to the property or surrounding property that create a hardship on the use of the property as it is currently zoned? Has there been a change in conditions within the area indicating that there is a basis for changing the zoning? And is there reasonable use of the property as it sits now? The zoning change, we also, I do always look at the future land use plan in your comprehensive plan. And, um, you have to look at that and, and see that, you know, zoning changes should be or promote compatibility between land uses, uh, in the area and the future land use plan, which hopefully. Nope, there you go.
No.
One back. No, no, there you go. That's the future land use plan, um, at the voluntary scene. It's off its neighborhood. So that is not a compatible land use for that zoning district, the future land use. So staff is recommending denial of the case. Again, P and Z also recommended denial. The list of uses, um, are listed in your agenda packet there as it's zoned presently and as it might be zoned. Any questions?
Any questions for Judy? Jerry?
Did you get any feedback from people around?
I did not. I did not, there were, there were none at, at P and Z.
Okay, the same thing came up.
Did, I heard that.
About three years ago.
Okay.
And there were a lot of complaints about it be handling bulk sand, cement, and southwest wind would take it over into the residential area. I, I guess he just pitched it out there again to see if it'd fly.
All right, any other questions for Judy?
I'm assuming the non-conforming uses around it was before annexation?
I didn't, wasn't able to do enough research on that, I couldn't tell you.
I'm seeing some nods for some old timers.
Yeah, really, I rely on them.
Well, and that, I, I appreciate that question, uh, or comment.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Because I think that there is a construction yard, just one lot across or back, I guess, be west?
That's correct.
That has masonry and.
Yeah.
Other stuff in it, so.
Exactly what he wants to do, so it is not a problem.
I mean, I understand the, his lodging.
Sure, did you have a question?
Actually, good.
Okay, all right, great. All right, is there anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of the, uh, recommendation? Or anyone wishing to come and speak in opposition? All right, then, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion. There, Mr. McDaniel?
Uh, Jerry's right, in, in late two thousand and nine or early two thousand, uh, ten, uh, Mr. Mendez, uh, attempted, original time, to rezon this property in which he had purchased, uh, from a gentleman who owns adjoining land. And he actually, uh, without knowing so, operated this, uh, as his construction yard and gave the residents across the street in Gulf Country Estates, uh, an example of what they would have to look forward to. When he was told that he was not allowed to conduct, uh, his type of business at that location under its current zoning, he came before the P and Z and then the city council and was, uh, at that time, there was a long line of people from Gulf Country Estates that, uh, were adversely affected by this. And they came to P and Z and they came to city council both, uh, to speak against it. I did have a couple calls from people in that neighborhood that said, uh, they, they didn't want it back, that they'd appreciate if we could, uh, could deny it again. And hopefully something more, uh, conducive to that neighborhood would be able to be developed there. And so at this time, I would, uh, move denial of this rezoning request.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Warren to, uh, deny the request as presented. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
I have one quick question for the counselor, if I may?
Yeah.
Uh, Randy, if we, uh, what's a super majority when you have, uh, six here?
You don't have a super majority here.
That's what I thought, it's seven regardless of how many are present.
You couldn't have overturned that amount if you wanted to.
Right, that's what I thought, just needed to clear that up, thank you.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll move on then to item seven on the agenda. And I'll open a public hearing for the request to rezon, uh, from R three, multi-family to B two retail commercial, lot one, block one thirty-nine, uh, Christian Edition one oh seven Lindell Lane. Turn it back over to Judy.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning and Zoning Commission met on the Wednesday, the nineteenth, and recommended approval of this request. Steve Gunn is the owner and applicant, uh, and he's requesting the rezoning of this lot, very odd-shaped lot from R three to B two. And I want to go ahead and pass these down, the, the wrong, or the wrong, uh, land uses list got put in your agenda packet. So this is the correct one with the R three and B two land uses. Uh, the property is currently vacant, it's just a small acreage, point two, six acres. And, uh, you can see it's, uh, right there, uh, there you go, that's the two hundred foot circle map showing the multi-family. No, that's the future land use, go back. Okay. The existing zoning around there is multi-family mainly. Uh, but the, the list that I have just given you, the two sets of, uh, existing and the proposed, uh, you can look at. Mr. Mr. Gunn was sent a letter asking him to be here, and he is here tonight with a couple of other representatives. His application for the rezoning stated the reason for his request was to allow a new storage building to be built on the lot. It will be a lighter use than other uses allowed in the R three. Uh, land uses that we don't have up here, but in the aerial, you can see there is, uh, single families to the south here, but surrounded, uh, by multi-family apartment complex on, um, on that property. The, the future land use plan, again, gotta refer to that in your comp plan, your approved comp plan, uh, shows that this property should be multi-family residential as it's currently zoned. Uh, a change to the B two would be in conflict with the future land use plan. Uh, this lot, according to the developer and statements made at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, um, is not buildable. But it is actually, there, there is enough buildable area there even with the setbacks. And it is possible to construct a duplex, a triplex, or even a fourplex on this property with the required setbacks and the required parking. The, uh, additionally, the, the zoning would be a spot zone. And I don't know if you've heard this a time or two, but a spot zone is generally defined as a piecemeal zoning amendment that arbitrarily singles out a small tract for special treatment. Uh, rezoning of a small tract is not automatically illegal, but it may be judicially laid, um, hell to be so if there is no justification for it, or adequate justification for it. When the council departs from the comprehensive plan and rezones, especially to benefit a small tract, it violates the Enabling Acts requirements that zoning be in accordance with the comp plan. Again, I'm giving you the three questions that you need to look at for rezoning. The zoning changes should always promote compatibility within the area and the nearby uses, not resulting in any kind of detrimental impact on the neighborhood. Staff cannot recommend approval of this request, uh, because it's contrary to the future land use plan and the property can be utilized, uh, as it is currently zoned. Staff has drafted a site plan with different options for residential development. The property is currently large enough to accommodate a duplex as well as a triplex or a fourplex with the required setbacks and parking.
Okay, any questions for Judy? All right, seen none, then I'll ask, uh, if there's anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of the proposal. We've got a request here from two, so if you wanna just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, uh, Steve Gunn, uh, owned the property, I live at one twenty-five Lindell Lane. And the property that I have, uh, we own the apartments, the thirty-six unit apartments, and now that we sold the apartment, we have to rezon that for storage building. The reason we wanna step, uh, Judy, I don't know, uh, the figures that we've had, we've owned apartments across the street and we've looked for ways to utilize that piece of property. About sixty years ago, my dad bought this land on the left here. The road cut that piece of property, and we've got an odd little shaped piece of property there that's been zoned R three. We have apartments, it's thirty-six units across the street from that. And now that we have that, we've looked at several things we could do with that for rental property, but there was just no way. And Judy said there was ways, but I don't know who, where she's getting her designs. We tried everywhere in the world to work out some kind of rental property that would be suitable for R three zoning. And we never could figure it out. We had a proposal from a gentleman to buy that property. Uh, Mr. White had a proposal for it, and he worked with an architect, ways to put some kind of duplex or fourplex there. We couldn't arrange it so that we could even do parking. In fact, in one end of this, this lot where it's, uh, here, there's a utility pole and guy wires going into that property. Uh, the electric company and the phone company says impossible to move that pole. So you're kinda limited on one cor- that pointed corner of that property. And as far as Judy was talking about compatibility, I believe compatibility belongs, that's me. Uh, we own three of the four houses, Lindell Lane is one block long. There's a hundred apartments on Lindell Lane. There's four houses on Lindell Lane, we own three of them. The other home on Lindell Lane belongs to Randy Thomas, and his property backs to the land that we're trying to pose for a single building, storage building, single owner, city utilities, so forth. And I believe Mr. Thomas would rather have a building there than multi-family use for that property. But the setbacks for that property to build any kind of fourplex, you would have no room for parking. And there's utility pole in the back, your guy wires are going into that property, it's, it's a myth. If there was a way to do that for multiple housing, we would have done it when we owned the thirty-six apartments. Now, we've since we owned, we sold the thirty-six units, we can't build over there until we change that zoning to a B two so I can sell it to an individual that does, we have a contract on it. One individual, one storage building, city utilities, a nice building. It would be compatible to me as a, as an owner of property on that street, and I believe for Mr. Thomas. D, did you wanna say, so D's handling the negotiating for the buyer, and I think he had something to say.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gunn? All right, thank you.
I'm D White, I'm a Realtor here in Stevensville since, uh, gee, nineteen sixty-nine. I've been a president since nineteen seventy-six. And I appreciate the city council and the mayor hearings tonight. I've had this lot listed now for about three months. It's, uh, eleven thousand three hundred twenty-five square feet, a triangle shape as you can see. And, uh, been trying to sell it and nobody seemed to want it. One lady offered me fifteen hundred dollars for it, a lady's apartment just.
I can see that here.
And, uh, uh, then a guy showed up and might, said he might build a house. And, uh, he talked to.
Talked to you here?
He talked to somebody in the city and said, uh, I can build a thirteen hundred square foot house. And I said, well, D, are you gonna buy it? And he said, no, I said, uh, I'm, I'm thinking about it. I never saw him again. So I was talking to Scott Allen on the phone, and, uh, Scott has got a lot that you might be interested in. He'd been wanting to put a, a storage building on a lot. And he looked at it and he's, you know, under contract to buy it. And, uh, I don't believe you could put a duplex or a fourplex on that dead-gone lot, just because of the way it's shaped. And, uh, uh, it's got a, a drain easement down on, on the north side of it and that narrow little thing in there, and, uh, I don't know how you can do it. And, you know, we didn't wanna have to rezon it to a B two either. We wanted it, uh, we wanted to say, okay, you guys let us put a, put a, a storage building on a R three, we're in great shape. And I think most of the apartments up there have got some, some storage around this, their own storage. They didn't have, they, they did on their R three, of course. But, uh, we just wanna put a, a storage building down here. And not sure about the size yet, or even how it's to be constructed, that's gonna go through the city on that, what you guys will allow. And, uh, he's also gonna put a little, uh, a little basketball goal on the backside of it for the kids to play on. There might be, that might be good for you guys, just go out there and play on it, enjoy it. And just keep in mind, there's a storage building right there, I'd say, I don't know, fifteen hundred, two thousand square foot, whatever. It's gonna be just like vacant, real, well, it won't be vacant, it'll be something building, but there'll be very few people, uh, driving in to, to add things to it. Maybe, Scott said maybe two or three times a, a week, they might, they might store something in it. And the way I understand it, there's not even gonna be any plumbing in the building, no restaurants, just electrical wiring. One minute, am I, am I through? Okay.
You can talk for another minute.
I'm just about to, anyway. Anyway, we really could, I've been trying to sell this thing, couldn't figure, couldn't figure out what to do with it. And, uh, Scott's gonna use it, and it's not gonna create any hard problems or any, anything for the whole neighborhood. Nobody's gonna care, and they're gonna have a basketball goal to shoot. I'll be worse than Randy. I tried to sell it to Randy, and he said no. But anyway, uh, that's really about all I've got to say. We, we're just trying to put a storage building there, we, we're, we had to go to B two. We were just trying to put a storage building there, and we had to go to B two zoning to it. And I wish we could've gone at R three and done it. Wish we'd gone at B two, well, I don't know if we'd do B one or not, but wish we could've got it done easier, so she'd be happy with us. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. White?
Yeah. Are you ever gonna give up the flat top?
Well, I'm seventeen when I did it, so I guess not. I don't think they do this.
We've got another question here.
The, in the, who owns the properties? I know, used to own the property across the street. Who owns it now?
Thirty-six, uh, Grandma Granberry, there is five. I don't have any problem with any owners of being that street, and the only homeowners on that is my family, my dad. We own four, three of the four houses over there. The other end is Randy Thomas's house. Everybody's okay with a storage building versus R three. We've got, R three's on that street. We've got a hundred apartments with one block.
The Stevensville West Apartments is on the east, and Lyndale Apartments is on west. There's apartments all around it, except for Randy.
Whether it's, I mean, we can't obligate you to not extend your application for permit, but whether there's gonna be some kind of fencing around it, like eight foot, ten foot tents, or there's gonna be just lot with parking around it, or...
Got you, you wanna talk about that?
I don't think you think that all of these plans are done, but I'm not gonna put a metal building or a structure to be built there, and all of them do is use the floor. Right now, doing the builds, just like they come in, doesn't get on the side. Hopefully, we'll have to ask all of you to either push or a concrete block side, or maybe a concrete board side, but I'm not gonna do that.
Okay, thank you. And I do appreciate that every time you see me, you say you like my haircut.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Or anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, then I'll close the public hearing at this time.
Mayor.
I actually got a question for Judy.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
I was just wondering, is the setbacks and all the other requirements for something like this different? If we change the zoning, then they would be from, if there was a house...
Well, somewhat, but what I was gonna, yeah. Well, it would be, but I've got a site plan. It can be done. And here's a copy of the site plan that shows that within the setbacks and the parking, it can be done. And yes, the setbacks would be a little bit different on the B two, but not substantially. Just want to remind you, it's a spot zone.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion then. Mayor, I move we approve the rezoning request as shown in our packet. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Warren, to approve, adopt ordinance twenty fourteen thirty-one as presented, rezoning from R three to B two. Hearing none, I'll proceed to vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? That motion carries approving ordinance twenty fourteen thirty-one. No?
Thirty.
We didn't use thirty.
We didn't use thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. So that'll be ordinance twenty fourteen thirty. All right, the next item, agenda item number eight, is once again another public hearing for discussion and action on an amendment to the zoning ordinance, section eighteen. And I'll turn the floor over to Judy and let her present that for the council.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of several amendments to the zoning ordinance that I'll be bringing forward to you. This is regarding the publication of amendments in the newspaper. The P and Z did recommend approval of this amendment on the Wednesday of November nineteenth. Your zoning ordinance, under changes and amendments set forth, the procedures for making changes to an ordinance, and in there, it says, section C states that a public hearing shall be held by the council, of course, before adopting any proposed supplement, amendment, or change. Notice of the hearing shall be given by publication three times in the official publication of the city of Stevensville, stating the time, place, and hearing with the time, and the time shall not be earlier than fifteen days before the first publication. This is a very onerous and costly requirement that evidently been on your books for a very long time, and I don't know why, because state law has never required three publications. I think it was something local, don't know how it all came about, I just know you don't have to do it.
How much do you have to do?
One.
Just one?
One. So, of course, this is kind of a no-brainer kind of thing. Save you some money, would've saved you some money. Certainly start saving money now.
Streamline the efforts.
Absolutely. You know, one of the publications I did to publish it three times, one time was a hundred and fifty dollars. So...
Okay, any questions for Judy? Any other questions, I guess? All right, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this? Anyone in opposition? Okay, then at this time, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pendleton.
Can I do it?
Yes, you can. Good evening.
Good evening. I move we adopt ordinance twenty fourteen dash thirty-one.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Ms. Zachary, to adopt ordinance twenty fourteen thirty-one, amending the zoning ordinance, section eighteen, as presented. Any discussion? If you all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? All right, that motion carries, adopting ordinance twenty fourteen thirty-one as presented. Good evening. All right, now we'll move to item nine on the agenda, which is a public hearing for discussion and action on an amendment to the zoning ordinance, section three, the definitions of conditional use, home occupation, and special use permits. And I'll turn the floor back to Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, a couple months ago, this was, this came up on that conditional use permit. P and Z, of course, on Wednesday, they recommended approval as a proposed amendment, but how we got here is, in light of October's conditional use permit deal that was on the council, I found some issues with the way the ordinance is written. The current definition of a conditional use is a use allowed in a zoning district only if a special use permit is granted by the Board of Adjustment. That's what it states. Ordinances can be confusing at best, and without adding any situations to it, which you have, so many of these in your ordinance, using the terms conditional use and special use without having clear definitions in your ordinance, in your zoning ordinance, is undesirable, and using them interchangeably is certainly not a good idea. And that's the way you've got it now in your existing ordinance. When the definition comes up in the zoning ordinance of a special use permit, it says is a conditional use. So it's very convoluted, and certainly nothing that is very, very clear as it should be. Again, we're trying to clear up some things in the zoning ordinance. Cities usually either utilize a conditional use permit or a special use permit, but not both. So I'm proposing that you add a new definition for conditional use permit, and it would be a use which shall be permitted in a particular district only upon fulfillment of conditions set forth for that use in the use regulations of the proposed appropriate district. Now, that being said, all I'm trying to do tonight is to get a change of that definition and take the Board of Adjustment completely out of the picture, which it doesn't need to be in the picture at all. So you'll see some things in the future that will go into other detail that you were talking about that night on conditional use permits and setting some standards and conditions, et cetera. So that'll be coming later. I couldn't get it all in one fell swoop here, but that will be coming. The current definition of home occupation, which is another thing that we were looking at, the current definition is any occupation or profession engaged in by the occupants of a dwelling not involving the conduct of retail business. The occupation shall be conducted in the building which is used by the occupant or as his or her private dwelling. Home occupation shall include professional services. Again, professional service is not defined. So what is it? Leaves it up to anybody's interpretation. I don't believe in leaving things, I mean, I just think you gotta get things as clearly stated in these ordinances as possible, and therefore you don't have the confusion. The proposed amendment for the home occupation is found on page sixteen, and it lists several things here. And first of all, it says that it shall be allowed without the necessity of a conditional use permit if such uses relate solely to the use of the home as further detailed herein by the residents of the premise, and such use does not create on-street parking, significant neighborhood traffic, or other disruptions of the residential character of the property. Also, the occupation shall produce no alterations or changes in the character of the principal building. I know that you've read all of these in detail, so I'm not gonna bore you with reading through them. I just thought maybe for the public here tonight that they would like to hear those. The occupation shall not require or provide for the employment of more than one additional person other than members of the household in which the home occupation occurs, not more than two business-related vehicles shall be present at any one time, such use shall be incidental and secondary to the use of the premises for residential purposes, and the occupation shall not violate any other rules or regulations of the code of ordinances, and shall not offer a ready inventory of any commodity for sale on the premise. And the proposal for the special use permit will be taken completely out of the code, so is there, that there is no confusion between special use and conditional use. Now, that being said, I want to tell you that anything here, if there's any of these that you see that you don't like or think needs to be changed, let's talk about it. But this is a pretty good template for the home occupation part of your zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Judy?
I do. Judy, the subject that came up, the request that came up that night about six, eight weeks ago, whenever that was, one of the concerns, well, this addressed that, I guess is what I'm saying, okay. And the second good thing is, it talks about the integrity of the neighborhood, or whatever you call it, I'm not sure the wording you used. One of the only concerns I had was permitting him would allow him to put a sign, a commercial sign in the front yard.
Right.
And this would prevent that.
Yes.
Because he would have to stay within the integrity of the neighborhood.
Oh, absolutely. You never want to allow that.
Well, but that was the big concern that night, was, that was one of the major concerns, that, you know, that he could, if we gave him that permission, to put a, open sign in the front yard.
Yeah.
And this would prevent that.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
There's also something in there when you mentioned that, you can't also, you can't advertise in a yellow page, you can't do any of that. Facebook, anything like that, you shouldn't. And so that goes one step beyond just the sign.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Director Miller. We have, do we have the ability to add conditional hours of operations into this as per needed for each individual situation? I didn't see it.
Well, that's where the additional, you know, I tried to get the definition changed, the conditional use permit. That's what I'll be bringing to you in January.
Okay.
Because it's going to P and Z this month, and then on to you in January, where you, because conditional use permits do need some stipulations and some conditions depending on what it is. And I'll have to go through each section of the code, of the code of, I mean, the zoning ordinance, and I'm not trying to change what land uses that you have in there now, maybe that's for future date, but at least stipulate how the conditional use permit can be granted by you all, the legislative body.
Right.
P and Z and council, not Board of Adjustments.
Not the Board of Adjustments, thank you.
Go ahead.
Ms. Miller, to kind of go off what Councilman McDaniel was asking, I think in our ordinances, there's no, language is void in regards to giving this body the authority to, on its own, amend a conditional use permit that's presented to this council, correct?
Start...
Well, I know, I think the local government code, correct me if I'm wrong, would allow, under, a lot of conditional use permits would allow, the ordinance allowed for it, would allow for us to be able to go through and add a conditional uses.
Oh, yeah.
That we, that this council wishes to add at that point.
Absolutely.
For example, if we want to add a restriction on time, or how often I have to reapply for the permit for a conditional use permit, we could do that as a governing body, if our ordinance is allowed for that.
Well, that's what I'm trying to add.
Okay, and that's what you're talking about, in January, you're gonna bring back to this council, okay?
Correct. I'm gonna add the stipulations or the procedures that will go for any conditional use permit. Now, you'll see in your ordinance that you allow conditional uses in each zoning district, it will say blah, blah, by conditional use. Just, that's typical, very typical. And we probably want to look at those as well to be able to protect the neighborhood and other elements, just like what you're saying, saying, Councilman.
Well, the council, though, this body have the authority to do that.
Oh, sure.
I mean, when it is brought for consideration to grant the conditional use permit, at that hearing, we could decide, we think there needs to be additional...
Absolutely.
Okay. Right now, our ordinance don't include that and allow us to do it, correct?
That's right. That's right. That's what I'm providing.
We're working on it.
That's what I'm gonna provide.
Okay, fantastic.
I just couldn't get it all done in one fell swoop.
No, no problem at all. Thank you for working on this.
Yeah. Ms. Zachary.
Well, and then one of the other questions that had come up was whether we could, whether that conditional use permit went permanently with the land and the property in case of a change of ownership or something? This, what you're doing would allow us to also address that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
I'll try to be very comprehensive in what I bring back to you, on the, the way you can grant conditional use permits in each zoning district.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Are anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone in opposition? All right, then I'll close the public hearing at this time and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance twenty fourteen dash thirty-two.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Ms. Zachary, to adopt ordinance twenty fourteen thirty-two, amending the ordinance, section three, under conditional use and home occupation as, and special use permits as presented. Any discussion? All right, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? All right, that motion carries, approving the adoption of ordinance twenty fourteen thirty-two. All right, and then the last item in the P and Z agenda block is a public hearing for discussion and action on an amendment to the zoning ordinance in section twenty-one point one, Board of Adjustment. And I'll open the public hearing for that at this time, and turn the floor back over to Ms. Miller.
I want to pass this out to you as well. This is, this is what is currently in your...
This is, this is what is currently in your zoning ordinance, about the Board of Adjustment, special exceptions. I was, I was pretty shocked when I saw it the first time. But the, the state law sets out certain, very certain, specific things that the Board of Adjustment has authority to do. They are hear and decide an appeal that alleges an error in an order requirement or decision or determination made by administrative official in the enforcement of the subchapter in the ordinance adopted under this, under this subchapter. In other words, building official, myself, anybody on city staff that they feel that has made a bad interpretation, they can take that to the Board of Adjustment and appeal that decision to the Board of Adjustment. The second thing they can do is hear and decide special exceptions to the terms of the zoning ordinance when the ordinance requires the board to do so. And you can see in my amendment, you see what you've got here. It's quite lengthy, and it gives way to me, in my opinion, it gives way too much authority for special exceptions in an area that should be a legislative. They're, they're, they're a judicial board, quasi-judicial. A lot of these things that you will read here, I feel, or, or should be legislative and come before the P and Z and the council. So that's what I'm trying to do, is pare it down big time and just allow, allow, the other, the other thing is to hear and decide other matters authorized when ordinance adopted. And that's, that's what you would be doing tonight, is, is that. The section is, is so much broader than most cities. Typically, cities restrict the Board of Adjustments authority because of land use issues. The board is a quasi-judicial board, as I spoke about. They should not and usually do not make determinations on land uses in zoning districts or conditions of those land uses within the districts. That's a legislative matter left to P and Z and council. And one thing that I thought, you know, just reflecting back on what happened a couple of months ago, the thing is, the Board of Adjustment holds one public hearing, and if you don't like it, you go to the district court. At least with this, you had two public hearings, people notified. The day in court sort of thing was really carried out very well because you had two public hearings. Just, just a side note there. So the staffer is recommending mainly that you pare down the special exceptions and really center in on the expansion of non-conforming uses. I think this will serve you well because the city has some areas of town, maybe houses, very small houses, in industrial districts where the person, the owner, might want to improve their house or expand their house. Can't do it. Can't do it because it's a non-conforming use, non-conforming structure in an industrial district which doesn't allow any residential. So that is a proper case to bring before the Board of Adjustment. And I've set out some criteria here for the non-conforming structures and the uses for you, and there's four different things. So, and one of the, you know, one of the best things that the Board of Adjustment does in any city, variances. You know, variances to setbacks, parking requirements, et cetera, et cetera. That's, that's a really good thing that they do, and that's probably ninety percent of all the cases that come before them. I don't know about here, but certainly in most cities, it's ninety percent of the cases are variance cases. To a restriction in a zoning district, not to the land uses, but the development standards within the districts. Yes, sir?
All right, questions?
This may be a redundant question. So the Board of Adjustments should have, and our ordinance does have the ability to deal with set, amending setbacks, or you're saying you're recommending that they?
No, they do now. That's a development standard in any of the zoning districts, and they do now, that's under a variance.
So like when the county came, well, you weren't here, so you would know, when the county came and had to replat their property for the county jail, et cetera, that could have been something the Board of Adjustments would have allowed and a variance for, a setback, cause it was like two feet or something.
Six inches.
Six inches, which cost them fifty or sixty thousand dollars a day. Okay, that's, I mean, I guess it's a rhetorical question, I guess.
Well, I mean, it sounds like something that, yes, typical Board of Adjustment variance case.
All right. Other questions for Judy? All right, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I'm gonna give you a hug.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, hearing done, I'll close the public hearing at this time and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty fourteen thirty-three.
It's been moved by Mr. Pendle, uh, excuse me, Sven, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, to adopt ordinance twenty fourteen thirty-three, amending zoning ordinance twenty-one point one, Board of Adjustment, Appeals, Section twenty-one one H, Special Exceptions. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries as presented, adopting ordinance twenty fourteen thirty-three. All right, and Ms. Miller, we just, thank you very much for your presentation, all that information, there was a lot of work that went in that, and also planning and zoning, who's not here tonight, obviously, but a lot of great work with that, you know, with the goal in mind of streamlining, becoming more efficient in our city government. So thank you very much. All right, with that, then we've got some committee reports to go over tonight, and the first of which is a Planning and Development Committee, and I'll turn the floor to Mr. Warren.
On page twenty-two, if you guys wanna look at, that was kinda what we did. Agenda item A was Annexation Committee. They met with us, I think there's sixteen members, Annexation Committee. They elected Red Harrison as the chairman of that committee. And Ms. Miller gave a really good presentation on overall view of the process, annexation process. Agenda item two was discussion of economic development. Several people expressed their feelings about economic development, how it should be done. The mayor put on a slideshow for us.
I just forgot my dog and pony, so we'll bring it next time.
Fifteen minutes.
There's no, no recommendations from the committee on either, either agenda item. So that concludes the report on the Planning and Development Committee.
Any discussion from the council?
Mayor, I would just like to say, being present for both of these things, I'm, I'm real excited about the work that the Annexation Committee has before them. It's a wide, diversified group of, of people. Everyone should be making good contributions to the meetings that they have. And in the economic development area, the mayor did propose a type of economic development corporation or economic type of outfit that would include a broad class of the other entities and participation by major employers. And it's something that I had seen for the first time, and I'm very excited about it. And I expect that we'll be having more meetings and including all the, all the parties in which we're hoping to partner with and get, get going on that. But I just wanted to, wanted to share my excitement of the upcoming work that, that the mayor and the Planning and Development Committee has started. Thank you.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'd like to say something. I'm not particularly talking for the planning and development, cause we hadn't voted on this, I'm just talking as a member of the council about economic development. Ms. Miller, I'm talking to Stephen about economic development, and I think something is gonna get done finally. And, uh, there's a little bit of the background about how far behind we are, and I've, I've said the same thing lots of times, you all are probably tired of hearing the same thing. If you look at the competition, which you could say Meadow West, Mountwood, and Cleveland, and, uh, the three ways to judge it is median family income, we're, we're last. Cost of living, we're last. Percent of poverty, we're last. Some people say the fact that college here may have something to do with that, and it may, but those are statistics from the Census Bureau. As, as one example, Cleb, Cleveland passed an economic development election in two thousand and one, and since then, they've had a, put in a performing arts center, what I call a three-stage pool, you know, one for kids to play in, and a lat pool, and then they even have some sort of a convertible top to put on it so you can swim in the wintertime. The high school has a swimming team out there, and then they have ninety-six acres that they've devoted to athletic fields, and they say that place is filled up all spring and all summer with a lot of out-of-town people that come in and spend their money. They have a senior citizens center that they've done something with, and a performing arts building where they have, you know, plays and stuff like that. And, uh, when we started trying to figure out what to do about it, you've heard me talk about the Jeff Moore, and he's, we came in here for orientation, we saw a little video of things, and he was the speaker on, uh, on, on economic development. I went to Irving for a seminar, orientation thing. I asked the Attorney General up there, they were speaking on the subject, who knew the most about it? He said Jeff Moore. I got this Attorney General's pamphlet, and they only have one outside lawyer participate in writing it, Jeff Moore. He'd been down here. He is the city attorney for Roland Oak and has been for quite some time. And, uh, um, in two thousand and nine, their, their sales tax on their sales, on their corporate, economic development corporation was seven million, and, uh, I think in two thousand and thirteen, it was eleven or twelve, and they expected to be fourteen million this year. And they attribute a lot of that to what they've done to increase the sales tax over there. He's also the city attorney for the colony. He meets two twos a month with one of those citizens and two with the other. They, they've had a economic development corporation, and he's helping guide that. Their sales tax, their property tax has gone down every year. They've had their sales tax over there in the colony. And their sales tax, their revenue has gone up. I've, I've talked to him. He, he came here once and talked to the city council, just kind of orientation type session. And, uh, I, I just think he, he has a lot of, not just legal knowledge, but practical knowledge about what to do, and I think we need to get him down here and, and, and have him talk to us, and I'm, I'm gonna be recommending to the Planning and Development Committee that they get him down here. And I talked to him and about, I said, there's several factors or factions in town. I said, I'd, I'd like to get you down here and invite the city council, whoever wants to come. Steco, Chamber of Commerce, Tarleton, whoever wants to come and ask you questions and let you see what's going on. And he, he has worked on agreements between Economic Development Corporation and Chambers of Commerce, so he, he doesn't just know how to form a corporation, I think he knows how to, how to make it work. And, uh, he said he thought he could, he could do this, he, he could listen to everybody one day in two or three or four hours, and then figure out what to do in another two or three or four hours. And, uh, and if, if he spent two, eight-hour days, he, he lives in Richmond, it's two hours drive down here and two hours back, and he charges for that cause he can't do other stuff. Well, I think it might be two days at sixteen hundred a day or something, or something like that, which is, well, maybe more than, thirty-six hundred. To basically find out everything he knows and everything he recommends and do the work to form a corporation, and maybe, maybe satisfy all these factions we have that we can all work together, hopefully, cause if, if we're gonna pass that Class B, Type B tax thing, that's an election in May, and we don't need to have people, we need to have everybody all hands on deck over this thing and, you know, try and get that done. And if we can get, I just think if we can get, invite all those people, we, we had, we had this kinda week or so, but I don't think we were ready for it yet, and, uh, he wa, he wasn't there, you know? So, uh, I, I, I think we got a, a really good expert, and not only knows the technical stuff, but the practical stuff. And I'll be asking, suggesting to Jerry, the chairman of that, to try to call a meeting and, and see if we can get him to come down here, invite anybody that wants to come and see, and try to get going. He, uh, he, he would have to write the ordinance by February the twenty-seventh, and the earliest we could have an election would be May the seventh. Now, it's, it's more important to do it right than to do it fast, you know? I, I think we could, I know the council could vote, I don't, I don't know how they vote, I know they can vote by then. I'm not so sure, we'd have to decide it with his help, if we were gonna be organized enough to, for the election to pass on May the, what did I say, the seventh, or the ninth? February twenty-seventh, May the ninth. So that's, uh, I think I've said what I wanted to say.
Well, here's what we, here's what we know. We know that we have in our budget fifty thousand dollars set aside for economic development. We know that in a previous meeting, we authorized a contract agreement with Mr. Moore, and we know that we've got a deadline of the twenty-seventh of February to act or not act. And so it appears to me that all the elements are in place to do what you're suggesting, and we just need Jerry and Pat to work together to, to schedule a time that would accommodate Mr. Moore's schedule and these other entities, you know, with the committee, with, with Steco and, and Tarleton and, and the chamber, to have a meeting. And, you know, the thing that you just said, boy, that I think is important, kind of new news, is that we don't, we don't have to have something published and, and out for review by the first week of January, which was the previous understanding. We've got, so we'll, we'll have the January meeting and the February meeting to, to work on this as the council. So it sounds like we need to organize ourselves for maybe a meeting in early January to, to knock this out in like a two-day event or something.
Okay, and by that time, I know you've got your plan, that you presented the other night, and maybe again tonight?
Right.
Let, you'll have that out, we'll all know about it, and Mr. Moore can look at that and make suggestions.
Right.
So as far as I'm concerned, when you're ready, that might work out, the time schedule.
Sound good to the council for us to launch that way? Okay. I think we ought to go ahead then and try to schedule something the first two weeks of January.
I'll see what days he's, Jeff Moore. I think I, I think I see some indication of one of these various factions that they're kinda easing towards trying to help each other out now, more than they were for a while, you know, so that's a good sign.
Right. And I, I think, you know, the meeting that we had last week, I think there was a lot of, a lot of cooperative discussion in the room, and, you know, boy, you said it was, it was early, but I think it, it kinda broke the ice as, as the discussion and, and the concerted effort on the part of the council to include these other, these other entities in the discussion to participate in it as we, as we go forward. And I think that's, uh, that's a, a very good thing. Any other comments? I do have some comments I wanted to make this evening on that, but I, does anybody else on the council have anything they wanna say? What, what I wanna do is help us kinda frame the problem as I did the other night, and what maybe our expectations or things to think about between now and January as we look at, you know, what, what is implementing an economic development strategy? And, and what I, what I'm gonna, what I wanna pass out here to the council to look at and give the pad, and I'll just talk through this for those of you that are here tonight. And, and my main, my main reason for doing this is, is to just make sure that we're all aware that this is a multi-dimensional issue that we're trying to deal with. And there's really four elements to that, that, that we're gonna have to, as a council, talk through and understand. And before I get to any details, though, I wanna say something to kick this whole thing off, to kill a rumor before it even starts. And that is that there are no initiatives that the council is talking about that will raise taxes for any citizen in the city of Steedville. This is not an initiative that requires raising taxes. It is also an action that does not require repealing the property tax rebate. It is also an action that does not require repealing the property tax rebate. Let me say that again, just so it is clear. Economic development actions that the council is considering does not require an increase in taxes, okay? It also does not require the repealing of the property tax rebate. There are, there's two percent of the eight and a quarter percent that is available for local jurisdictional use. A half cent is with the county, a half cent is property tax rebate, and there's one cent that is uh, undedicated sales tax. And that one percent is obviously an area that we're gonna have to look at as we discuss how to finance economic development in the future, okay? So I just wanted to get that out upfront, because, you know, I wouldn't have said that a year ago, because I thought, because I hadn't done as much homework as I have now, that well, this may be dead on arrival, because how on earth are we ever gonna repeal the property tax rebate? Well, let's just move on to something else. Well, a lot smarter on the subject now, and you know, what we all know in the council is that, you know, you don't have to repeal the property tax rebate to be able to fund a type B corporation, and so that's some of what we're gonna have to look at and, you know, wrestle with, how do we, how do we, or can we look at that one percent? So I just wanted to get that um, kind of out there as a, as a, you know, to remove that rumor. Um, and I wanted to just take a moment and talk about economic development and what is, and this is just my vision of what we're trying to do. Economic development is not about increasing the population of Steedenville. It is about improving the living and working conditions for the citizens of Steedenville. Improving the living and working conditions of Steedenville. Um, and our goal of this effort, of what we're talking about having a meeting in January, is to implement a formal economic development program. Because we as a community, and what Boyd talked about, we do not have a formal economic development program in our community that facilitates and integrates the city and the chamber uh, in an approach. We are doing economic development, but we don't have a formal program. And so what we're attempting to do is to create that, and the goal is to deal with the spectrum of both business startup, business retention, and recruitment. So it's not all about just bringing a new business to town. It's about starting new businesses, like the entrepreneurs of E-Rath effort that's going on with the the College of Business at Tarleton, and it's about retaining businesses that are here and taking care of our own. Okay, so now to the multi-dimensional piece of what this is, and I think this is really important for us as a council to understand, and not get, you know, tunnel vision in one particular area. You have a potential vote about type B is a very important issue, but it's only one of four. And I've laid out what I feel like are the four main areas that we're gonna have to deal with. One is, how do you um, how do you provide the capacity to do economic development? In other words, how do you staff, the city staff and the chamber, to coordinate an economic development program? You gotta have people to do the work. So you either pull from existing positions, or you tap into existing uh, parts of the chamber and city, or you hire new people, you know, some combination of that. So there's the people issue, that's one issue. The second issue is how you fund economic development. That's where the discussion about type B, type A, using the existing general fund, using private sector money from Steadco, that's where that item enters the discussion, how do you fund it? The third area is our policies. We have on the books today economic development policies. They've been on the books for a long time, and they are used, they have been used. Are those policies accurate? Are they effective? Um, are they up to date? That's the third area that we need to look at. Are our policies where they need to be at? And then fourth, and I think arguably one of the most important of the four, is a partnership agreement that creates up a, a formal collaborative effort between the city, the chamber, Tarleton, Ranger, and E-Rath County to do economic development for our community as a whole. Uh, and this is the discussion that we had the other night at our meeting. It is, it is in our best interest for this organization to have a public and a private perspective of economic development. Because if you get too government-focused, you come up with an answer that's a government program solution to economic development, and is not very effective. If you're too private-focused, you lose the ability to properly integrate with the city's growth and development as our city's comprehensive plan details. And so the ability to bring these entities together in a formal organization can allow us to do that. And so these are the four areas, you know, when we bring Jeff here in a couple of, you know, a few weeks, and we've got commitment from uh, you know, we had participation from Steadco, from the chamber, Tarleton at the meeting the other night, uh, we need to get Kerry Schindler probably involved from Ranger to be there, and uh, you know, someone from the county, for us to just sit down and kind of keep these things in front of us and work through them, and come up with the combination of these four that best fit our community. And I feel like that we're gonna be very successful in this, uh, because it, it um, there is a tremendous amount of interest in us creating a formal program that doesn't require us um, to necessarily uh, change who we are, but allows us to to sustain and protect the values that we have in this community. So, is there any questions from the council about any of these four areas that I've gone over?
On the partnership thing, I think you had what, eleven?
Nine, nine positions, but there were some others that were thrown in there. That was using an example from another city where there were two members from the council, two from the chamber, two from the private business, there was the president of the university, there was a president of the community college, uh, that comprised the advisory board of the partnership.
Okay, if we set up a type B corporation, uh...
That's a seven-member board.
Yes, but this partnership we're talking about, now they would study the different things, come up with recommendations to the council? Or what's kind of the chain of command?
I think that's a great question for Jeff to help us answer, you know, and his expertise in dealing with the partnership arrangement. I mean, it may be where we have the seven board members, and then we have five ex-official members that participate with the board, so that there's communication and awareness of the decision-making, you know, so I think...
Well, when it comes to spending money, the council has to be controlling it.
Right, so the seven-member board that reports to the council will control the purse.
When you just say it's too short, then, I see some, Walter, we were talking about that swimming pool, and I see some people here that worked on the swimming pool ahead here. We wanna do the same thing they did, that's what I call three stages, and we didn't have the money, you know, and it's not because the people on the committee didn't want to do it, it's not because of anything else, it, we just didn't have the money. Well, so hopefully the the economic development corporation will solve that problem, or we can do that kind of stuff. And the only other thing I've missed in hiring this economic, I mean, the city administrator, we're down to February thirteenth, candidates, a lot of them claim that they had economic development experience. And, I mean, we hadn't interviewed those guys, but the role of city manager does both. And I, you know, I don't know the details of that, but uh, what they pay, and the city pays part of his salary, and the economic development pays part of it, so we might get some knowledge from that, we might not, that's all I'll say.
Yeah. I mean, you know, trying to come up with an analogy of what we're trying to do is, is um, it's like we're looking to, we're really good at offense, we're really good at defense, and we have no special teams coach. You know, and what we're doing is just relying on the offensive-defensive coach to say, okay, let's get eleven guys out on the field, and we hope you kick the ball and tackle the guy who catches it. You know, and sure we can do that, but what we're trying to do here is get a special teams coach, and a special teams program, because that's the third piece of the game, and if you don't do it well, you get beat, and that's what's, you know, it's not that we're, you know, that's... And I say that to say that, you know, we are doing economic development, you know, the bus tour that took place was a great initiative, it was a cooperative effort that included all, everybody that we've mentioned here tonight, but that was kind of a pickup game, you know, how do we sustain this long-term so that we, you know, look after the best interest of the community? So, all right, so we'll, we'll uh, hold the planning and development committee, and Pat, y'all will work to schedule a meeting first or second week of January to look at economic development.
Well, do you want Jeff Moore to talk to that thing instead of the whole council, or of course, I would think on the council, then we'll be there, but...
Yeah, I think we could work either way, but I mean, the attendees need to be the city, the chamber, Tarleton, Ranger, and the county.
Right.
And for Jeff to guide the discussion about how does he recommend we address these four areas, and just get his...
Okay, so do it with the P and D committee, and then hopefully all of us will show up.
Right, right. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, good deal. Uh, and I'm sorry that, Jerry, I'm making your committee report longer than you intended, but I wanted to come back to the annexation committee.
Well, ten minutes doesn't mean anything to you.
Yeah, uh, the annexation committee, uh, because this is a really important point that council member Sivin brought up earlier that I want to reiterate. The purpose of the annexation committee is to create an annexation plan for our city comprehensive plan, which it does today not have. And so this committee actually is creating a plan for the council to review and approve sometime over the course of the next year. And the comment that Mr. Sivin made earlier about non-compatible use in a unannexed area, that's one of the reasons you create a plan, is so that as you have development occurring, uh, you're able to to coordinate that so that the growth in the, in the community is compatible with the uses around it. You know, and that's how you, you help manage that. So the annexation plan, this committee is not organized to come up with the next area to annex for a vote in some point in the future. No, its task is specifically to create an annexation plan for the city's comprehensive plan. And obviously, from that comes recommendations about specific annexation efforts, but that's, that's one of the reasons that we've got the diversity that's included in the committee, and it's gonna be very helpful in giving us the, a really comprehensive view from the community as that goes forward, so I just wanted to mention that. Okay, Jerry, you finished now?
Golly, Jerry, I know you're so worried.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
All right, item twelve then, the nominations committee report, Ms. Zachary.
Uh, yes, I am, I'm pleased to announce a report that thanks to everyone's efforts, we had a really goodly number of applications to consider. Uh, we met on November fourth and fourteenth, um, and managed to fill every spot except for a spot on the water conservation committee. And the action I'm recommending, I guess, well, I move that the council approved the committee recommendations uh, for appointments to the citizen boards and commissions on the corrected handout to include also a late addition of Rick Hale to place one on the building board.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Zachary, seconded by Mr. Sivin to approve the nominations uh, to citizens' boards and commissions as presented in our handout. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I've got some questions.
Okay.
Uh, just for my education, I guess, more than anything else, I noticed here I've got several pages in front of me regarding the planning and zoning commission, particularly pertaining to two people that are currently on there, and I'm assuming there's the, we're anticipating some conflict with those applicants possibly, or these people are currently serving, or there wouldn't be papers in front of me pertaining to that. Uh, so I see here that on the planning and zoning commission, looks like, I guess, places, oh, let's see, three, and five, and seven, of course, five is vacant, and then three and seven, there's replacements there, and I'm assuming as well that it's not because on three and seven those people have communicated to us, they know on which to serve, is that correct, Ms. Zachary?
Yes, that's correct.
And so the board's recommending to replace places three and places seven with the people that you recommended here today? And just, can you tell me, why are we wanting to do that, I guess?
Um, well, let's see, um, place uh, uh, three, I believe, which is Dell, um, he's been on since two thousand and seven, and we've had a whole lot of good applicants, and it seemed like that we really, really appreciated his service, and that uh, but there is uh, a case to be made, I think, for some new viewpoints, as time has passed, economies change, different things are going on, helping up the economic development and stuff. Um, and as to the uh, other position, um, uh, the, that was filling out in incomplete term, and that's why that's up again. And as I stated, we had a whole bunch of very good applications, and um, we picked somebody who had a lot of qualifications, been attending a lot of the meetings, and so forth.
And don't get me wrong, I think Martha would make a great candidate, Martha.
And again, I appreciate the service of everybody that's been on, it's not a...
So on place seven though, I guess my question is, did that person wish they no longer to serve on that board? Or did they reapply once again, and were not selected at this point, to continue their service?
Right, they indicated a willingness to continue to serve, uh, but the nominations committee did not select them.
And I believe, I mean, of course, I know under our policy procedure that they serve at the council's pleasure, all these board members do, we can remove and replace anybody who want to, but I think what is our, can you educate me though, on what is the procedure as far as which year and what places are typically chosen, because we chose, we choose to fill them? I think one, three, five, seven, nine on odd years is when we do selections for
Correct.
the even year, we're in now, correct? And of course, in odd years, we're doing even number places, so.
Right.
Okay. So all these positions are open for selection?
Yes, they are open, we're not terminating any term early. These are all the end of the term, it'll take effect uh, January, January.
And then last question, I don't see my packet, I mean, what was the...
Great, before you leave that point, I think it's important that we reiterate the fact that these are not uh, terms for life, the citizens of the Supreme Court, and so you do look at the odd places one year and even next. And so it is, as you stated correctly, you know, to look at all the places this year as a group, so.
And this is typically what we do as a mid-councilor, right, when you're looking at the places, when it's odd or even, depends on what year we're in the calendar.
Right, exactly.
Right, these terms are being completed.
And then, and then last question, I didn't see my agenda packet, I mean, I, was the committee unanimous in this decision, or I know the committee's recommendation is to adopt this, but I was just curious as to what the vote of the committee was.
The first time, the vote was three to one, is that correct? At the first committee meeting, and the second time, um, it was three, and there was one member that was out, so three in favor.
Okay, other questions? All right, if not, then we'll proceed to vote, and I do wanna remind us that we're voting, our our paper here has vacant next to place one for the building board, but you did amend this to include Rick Hale as a recommendation for place one on the building board. So the only vacancy left will be place one under the water conservation committee. So if there's anybody out there interested in that, please, please submit. Oh, and the plumbing board, excuse me.
Oh, and I'm making part of it, yes.
Okay, so we've got two vacancies yet to fill, if anybody's interested in the water conservation committee or the plumbing board, place seven there. All right, there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor of accepting the nominations for citizens' boards and commissions, signified by saying aye.
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 All is opposed? All right, that motion carries, approved as presented. And I'd like to just say a word of thanks to Sherry and to Cindy for your efforts to... for your efforts to, to go out two or three times to the, the community to, to get, uh, people interested in getting involved, and, and, uh, we just needed to continue that great work, so thank you.
Well, and I really appreciated, um, Cindy and, uh, Pat did a lot, trying to get a lot of more applications in, and then some of the council members, Jerry, you did a lot of recruiting and so we, uh, for us.
Okay, well, great, thank y'all.
We really appreciate them.
All right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Sivin, seconded by Ms. Zachary to approve the consent agenda as presented, any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? All right, that motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted as presented. All right, the, uh, city administrator.
Just a reminder to the community, mayor and council, the Holly Jolly Christmas will be out here at the downtown plaza a week from tonight, from six to nine, we invite everybody to come out, have a good time, celebrate the holiday spirit. Um, there will be the, uh, annual employee Christmas lunch for, uh, current employees and retirees. The council is invited as well, uh, that'll be December the nineteenth, from eleven-thirty to one, over at Paradigm Building. And then, uh, tentatively have a committee meeting of the finance committee and public works committee for, uh, next Tuesday. Time is tentatively five o'clock, and hopefully we can get in and, and get out quickly.
Okay, and then we've got a personnel committee on the sixteenth, which will be the, uh...
And that will be an executive session.
Executive session, which is our next review of, uh, resumes for the city administrator. The sixteenth. All right, uh, council member comments. Uh, and Mr. Hogan is hopefully calling a couple of Tarleton victories tonight, uh, that's why he's not here. Uh, Boyd, you got any comments?
Nothing else.
Mr. Sivin?
With eleven minutes left, the Texans were up fifty-five, forty-seven. We'll see how it goes.
Okay. I wonder what that earpiece was in your ear, yeah. Mr. McDaniel?
Uh, quickly, three things. The first thing I wanted to do was to commend, uh, all of our staff, the directors, and, and folks that are working so hard, uh, every day down here for us. We appreciate all that y'all are doing. The second thing, uh, I'd like to wish everyone out there in Stevieville and E-Rath County a Merry Christmas. Like, we won't be on TV again till after Christmas, so I just wanted to wish everyone Merry Christmas. And the third thing is, uh, I'm a proud nineteen-seventy-seven graduate of Stevieville High School. They play Gramm this Friday in Mineral Wells at seven-thirty. Go Jackets!
All right, that's right. Mr. Pendleton?
No comments.
All right, Ms. Zachary?
No comments.
I'm good.
Okay, all right.
After your long committee meeting.
After your long committee meeting, you, you decided to stop talking, huh? Okay, well, I've just got a, a couple of short comments about economic development I want to go over tonight. Yeah, no, I, I want to, uh, just wish everybody is safe and, uh, happy holidays. And I will, uh, be looking forward to lighting the Christmas tree. We got some, uh, kids from the foster home that are gonna be there helping me. Uh, just like to invite everybody out, a great celebration down in our, our square. And, and, uh, just a, a reminder, uh, next time you look at Holly Jolly Christmas, I want you to think of this. The holy jo- joy of Christmas, take the L's out. And, uh, that Holly Jolly is kind of a disguise of the holy time for the year and the joy that, that is Christmas. And, uh, just want to encourage everybody to, to, uh, have a great time. And the, um, Jackets win it on Friday will be a, a great way to, uh, to do that, so... The, uh, next time we meet, it'll be twenty-fifteen, so, there you go. We'll, uh, now move into an executive session. And in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Law, section five-five-one, deliberation, uh, with attorney. So thank y'all for coming tonight.